Following last year's model, we have a panel of board members fabulously joining me, to whom I will ask questions as the emcee. So sorry. But to start, and just to be totally transparent, I don't know about you all, but I'm a little nervous about this. So you are going to be a great audience for us, yes? Thank you. But to start, would each of you, following my lead, share your name, congregation, your role professionally and/or on the board, and answer this challenging question? What is it like being a board member? And why did you say yes to serving? So as I said, I'll start. I'm Barb Hreath, a member of First Parish in Framingham, Massachusetts. In my professional life, I am a hospice chaplain and the Religious Education Assistant to the Unitarian Universalist Church of Palo Alto, California. On the board, I am one of the two co-moderators along with Alandria Williams. And I said yes to serving because I believe that governance is important, and I'm a wonky geek that loves board work.
Well, I'm Tim Mackens. I serve as the Director of Religious Education at the Cedar Lane Unitarian Universalist Church in Bethesda, Maryland, and I'm a member of the CEA. My role on the board is I am the Financial Secretary, as you may have just heard. And what's it like being a board member and why did you say yes? So at times, it can feel like a heavy load. I love this faith. I want us to help look out our values and practice what we preach. But there are times it can feel like you're having to carry a heavy load. And one thing that reminds me of that is the BANA Parade. I love the BANA Parade every year. Seeing all the congregations march in reminds me of this is why, who I'm doing this work for. And I said yes to being on the board, so I could help give religious educators a voice on the board. I'm just finishing my first three-year term. I said yes to serving again, because the past couple of years, we've had a lot to deal with on the board, and I want to make sure future boards don't have to struggle through some of these same issues that we have.
My name is Denise Rhimes. I'm a member of First Unitarian Universalist Church of Richmond, Virginia. Professionally, I work in marketing division, Bank of America, with whom I've been employed for 39 years. I don't touch the money. If you have an account problem, I'll get you to the right person. I joined the board because I had three incredibly powerful mentors who insisted that I had something to contribute. Wasn't until I did what they told me that I realized that maybe I could make a difference in the world through this faith. And I continue on the board despite the difficulties. It is hard. There is a lot of work, and there are many, many opinions to take into consideration. But I continue the work because I know that there are those who will come after me, who need the groundwork laid. It was laid for me by these three very powerful mentors, and I have an obligation to continue those kinds of relationships with other people.
My name is Bailey Sattlemeyer. I am a member of the First Unitarian Church of Providence. I'm 18 years old and serve as a youth observer to the board. Thank you. And in my professional life, I am a page at my local library. Not quite as impressive as a job, a job, but oh, well. Well, the reason that I originally applied to be on the board is because I was doing work within my own congregation. And by the recommendation of my Director of Religious Education, Kathy Segal, I applied. And I haven't regretted it. Being able to give a voice for youth on the board is so rewarding, and it's so important. And I've just been thrilled to serve. Thanks.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Reverend Manish Mishra Marzetti. I serve as Senior Minister currently of our congregation in Lincoln, Massachusetts, transitioning to Ann Arbor, Michigan within a month or so. Very excited about that. I'm a dad. I have a seven-year-old and a four-year-old. I'm a science fiction fan, so I love all the Star Trek, Star Wars-y type of stuff. Let's see, I said yes to serving on the board after many years of leadership in the UUA. I've been at the national level for 15 to 20 years in various volunteer positions, and I've never, this is my first time serving on the board. And I said yes to doing that before I even knew who the next UA president was going to be, because I wanted to support whoever it was. It felt very exciting to me to be at the beginning of a new UA presidency and helping shape and bring alive whatever that new era was going to be.
Thank you. And Manish, you mentioned being a father, which got me thinking about the things that we give up when we choose to be of service at this level. So I'm wondering if you and/or other members of our panel might speak to, what have you given up, if anything, in order to be in full service to the board?
Well, you hit the nail on the head. That's the number-one thing for me personally. It is actually some degree of family time. And so, you know, as I was departing to come out here for GA, my little girl, who's four years old, was kind of grabbing my legs and saying, Daddy, don't go on the trip. You have to really go. You're going to be gone. I'm going to miss you. And it's so sweet. And, you know, and many of us do that. You do that in your congregations too, you know, the sacrifices to be a leader in your church. And so, we do that too, and make similar choices to serve our faith.
Thank you.
For me, it's time. It's energy. It's, you know, that available amount of G A gets sucked up by board work. Some years, some months more than others. I would say I haven't given up a sense of comfort in a lot of areas. So my first year on the board, we were doing one style of governance, one style of business. And it was definitely a system that was rooted in patriarchy. I'm a big old white guy, and so that was, that kind of business was familiar to me, right? And then we had, last year, which was its own special snowflake. Then this last year, we really focused on a new style of business, and I had to give up some of my comfort level for that. And has it been worth it, of course. The new way of doing business from this past year with the focus on collaboration speaks to a deeper part of who I am. And speaks to me as an educator, speaks to me as a gay man. And so, I really appreciate that level of collaboration that we're seeing. I've had to give up the comfort in being able to know the process well enough to make what I want to happen, happen, right? Because we can abuse processes that way when we know they're really wrong. So I had to give that up in order to live to a true spirit of collaboration.
When, about my second or third year of coming to GA, this is, I think, my maybe 15th GA.
White spot on.
Can you hear me now?
Well, personally, I really connect with both Tim and Manish. This is the third year in a row where I've been away on my mom's birthday. I left on my dad's birthday for this conference. So it can, it can really be sad to have to miss your family for a week and as well to have to miss times like that, as well as I'm not able to support my brother through all his sports and everything going on. But also, I missed my junior year last year past March. Everything that was going on on the board, I was in high school. I had teachers who weren't UU's, and so they didn't totally get what was going on. And it was a struggle to balance time. But the thing was, is that it was just kind of something you had to grab and hold on until it stopped. And it, it did stop, but we are still doing the work that we were doing last year, just in a less frantic manner.
To build off something you said, the one thing that we also give up coming to this conference as a board member is we give up the GA experience. A lot of us have been to GAs for a long time, but once you're on the board, you know, today started off at 7:00 AM for most of us on the board. We have about an hour and a half break for lunch, and we're finishing at 10:00. And so, all day is filled with meetings and business and making sure GA is running smoothly and that we're doing the good work with the association. It's good, fulfilling, exhausting work, but you really lose that wonderful GA experience.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. My second or third GA about 15 years, 14 years ago, I was my first year as a volunteer at GA. And I gave up my extended family vacation to be here. They went without me. Thank you very much, if you're watching. And ever since then, it doesn't feel to me like I'm giving something up. It's work that I love, and I, and I understand what my, my colleagues here have said, but it's work that I look forward to. It's an immersion that feeds my soul. And while there are certainly moments throughout the year, being on the board, especially in the past year, where I wondered how much longer I could do this, I always come back to, this is the work that I'm called to do.
Denise, thank you for framing it in that way. Thank you to all of you. That makes me think about, we often think of service as things that we have to give up, and I know that's how I framed the question. But there are also things that we gain by change. And sometimes we give one thing up to gain more than we expected. And I frame this because we've been, we just heard this fabulous report from the Commission on Institutional Change about some of what they've discovered and some of what we need to do to change the way we do the work of Unitarian Universalism. Why don't we spend a few minutes talking about how the work of the Commission on Institutional Change is influencing the work of the board?
Well, my first year on the board, I don't remember us talking about matters of race very often. And I can't recall a board meeting in the past year and a half where we haven't spent almost not a majority of the board meeting talking about this. And so, that's one way the response of resolution, the commission has changed our work. I think a harder to see, a harder to witness from the outside perspective, how it's changed our work, is just our internal processes are dramatically different because of this work. It's much more of a spirit of collaboration. It's much more of a multicultural leadership style. We really do share leadership all the time on the board. And although for me, it took some getting used to, it's definitely changed our board work for the better.
It's hard. It's really hard as an old white lady to roll with some of the changes. But if there's one lesson, I've learned thousands of lessons, but certainly with the work of the commission lifting this up, as well as the new processes and ways of being that Tim described, it, it's hard but joyful work. It helps give me the tools, I think it helps give all of us the tools to become better people, better friends, better colleagues, and better citizens of the world. I am an incredibly massive extrovert, so my mind goes on vacation while my mouth works overtime. And that can be dangerous in the world today, quite frankly. And, and so I've learned about the importance of thinking carefully, thinking carefully about what I'm saying and who my audience is and the spirits that inhabit this room. So the lessons of awareness and of a much broader socialization through the work that the commission is doing, and so many others as well, has helped me become, again, a better citizen of the world, I hope.
Well, when, when I first entered the board doing the work, I didn't totally understand how the system that we were currently using was founded in white supremacy. I didn't realize. And so, when we started doing all this work with collaborative leadership, it really opened my eyes. I didn't totally realize the problem with Robert's Rule of Order, but that was probably because I was just learning how to use it. But slowly, or actually rather quickly, we started to use collaborative leadership with Alandria and Barb and our co-presidents last year. And I felt that we were actually all being listened to. In my first year on the board, before all of the problems, I felt like it was a rather closed discussion that didn't allow everybody to speak, or at least everyone who spoke wasn't being listened to in the same way. And now, I actually feel like we are all being a part of this leadership, and we are all being a part of this work, and it's equal, as opposed to a hierarchy.
So I'll, I'll speak to some of the, some of the joys and also some of the sadnesses too, because I think that I've personally experienced both of those things as a leader of color in our movement. And the exciting and creative part is exactly what Bailey was talking about, you know, to step into both bringing alive and modeling what, doing the work of Unitarian Universalism, how that can look and feel different, beginning to appreciate and understand how rules of order and rigid processes can actually be exclusionary. They can be forms of control, controlling outcomes, controlling participation, controlling whose voices are heard and not heard. To begin to realize that and make intentionally different choices that feel more inclusive, more participatory, is creative and radical and so full of hope, hopefulness for me too, because I think one of the things I see is that if we can begin doing that differently and well, and modeling that at the national level for all of our communities, my hope is that it's, it's something that will filter out, filter to the rest of Unitarian Universalism, that we can begin practicing these ways of being together in our congregations and in our communities across, across the world, and not just North America. What does, what would it look like to really be as inclusive as we aspire to be? That's exciting to me. And hand in hand with that, as a leader of color, to, to hold the knowing of how, how deeply we fall short of that on a regular basis, not just at the national level, but at the local level, and I'd say maybe even all of our communities in different ways, it's a deep and profound sadness for me. And, and even as I've held both of those tensions within me, the, the joy of the creativity of what we're doing and the possibility that it represents, as well as the sadness, I've watched over and over again as my colleagues on the board have companioned me and held me, really held me, and I mean that spiritually, emotionally held me through both of those sets of feelings. And that's also been incredibly hopeful to me, to, to know that my, my peers and colleagues love me enough, care about me enough, as a UU who's, who's a minority in so many different ways, to, to witness the heartache and the sadness and the disappointment that I at times feel, to not discount it, to not be defensive about it, but instead to love me and walk with me side by side through it, even as we are working on doing things differently. It's been powerful. It's been powerfully hopeful, and I'm grateful to be a part of that.
Thank you. We've mentioned the, the intentional shift that the board has been making to embrace different styles and models of leadership and co-leadership. What have been some of the ways this is happening, and how is it changing, from your perspective, how is it changing the way we as a board do our business?
Well, I'm up here, and I was up here 10 minutes ago, and last year, I was able to hide very well. I was really locked behind the scenes, but I hid. And so, Alandria said, no, not anymore, and I'm up. So I think that's part of this shift, the leadership collaboration, is that we're all expected to have, we all have the same expectations. And yeah, we're here. I don't, before, a couple of years ago, last year or this year, I don't recall the last time reports were done like this, in this kind of style, for example.
If you've attended a board meeting either in person or virtually, and I encourage you to do that somewhere along the way, it, it, I hope that you will feel as different about it as I do, because it's so much less formal. And, and by that, I mean that we are really working around a consensus model, and it's not making sure that everybody agrees with every word. In fact, this ruler comes out when you start trying to wordsmith, and then the ruler gets sort of waved. It's actually usually a finger, but it feels like a ruler. And so, we've really tried to back away from that. You heard Alandria talk about, you know, how, about our theological grounding in our hopes for the coming years. And that's where our conversations are headed. We're putting aside a lot of the wordsmithing and the, where the commas go and the ifs, ands, and buts, and saying, does everyone agree with where we are trying to go with this? And instead of I versus nay, it's, yes, I'm with you, not really, but I don't have reservations strong enough to stand in the way, or I have enough reservations to say, we need to stop and talk about this some more. That gives you a very different sense of decision-making and being, ultimately being together and being able as a board to speak with one voice. It feels so much more powerful, and I don't mean power in a way of, we can tell you better what to do, but rather that we are much more unified, much more on the same page, and subsequently much more comfortable representing the congregations and covenanted communities of this association to continue to build this faith. And it's a wonderful feeling.
Well, one of my favorite new aspects of the meetings that we have is the fact that our observers aren't observers anymore. If you come to a meeting, you're part of the meeting whether you want to be or not. And it's really wonderful, because the thing is, is that the people who are coming to this meeting are people who are very passionate about governance. They're people who are making a change through their committees, or through their congregations, or their own associations. And it's really wonderful to actually be able to hear what they would like to say and be able to actually have conversations with them, as well as just the board members that we're usually having conversation with. And so, we're able to have those new perspectives, and we're able to have those different people who come with their own stories and are able to speak to them.
This is such a neat conversation to be able to share with you. You know, I was reflecting as I was listening to my colleagues on the board. Every last person on the board is really good at governance, myself included. Like, we know Robert's Rules of Order. We know how policy-based governance works intimately well. And, and I have to catch myself at times too, because I, I wind up getting caught in questions around like, what rule should we be following right now? Or what does policy-based governance require of us here in this moment? And, and we keep calling each other back to a different set of questions, because it's possible to get lost in governance for the sake of governance. And we are super clear, we're all in this to transform our faith and nurture and grow our faith, not to perpetuate governance for the sake of governance. And that is... I can't begin to tell you how exciting that is. I mean, it is, I make real sacrifices in my family life to be doing this, and that's why I'm doing this, because I, I see the glimmers of how we can transform Unitarian Universalism. And it takes this, like, we need to be able to share with all of you what we're doing and model it and show you all how we're doing it, because it's not enough for your national board to be doing some of these things differently. We need all of us to be thinking about how we're doing these things differently.
Thank you. One more question. What are your hopes for the upcoming year? For Unitarian Universalism, for the board, for yourselves, in the context of our faith? What are your hopes?
Well, I guess my hope is we have to keep on moving forward, never turn back, that we are on a trajectory of really exciting possibility, and we need to keep that trajectory alive. For Unitarian Universalism, it's twofold. One is that we remember that social justice is, we like to think of social justice as going out there and doing work. We need to remember that we have a lot of stuff in our congregations in-house that we need to be working on in order to truly model social justice. And one is that we remember to work in-house, not just out there. And then, two, it's to, my hope for Unitarian Universalism is that we continue to lift up religious educators and religious education as, in order, as a life-saving, a faith-saving group institution in our denomination, and that we keep investing in religious education to invest in our families and children.
I would say two things. Thank you. I would say two things. And first is sort of looking backwards. It sometimes feels like radical change discounts work that has been done before the, by the, discount the work that has, shoot, that has been done by those who came before us. And I just want to say for the record that everyone on this board is so grateful for our predecessors, and, and we can step back as far as we need to for the groundwork that they have laid and the tools that they have given us to be able to move forward. This is not about changing things that were bad or wrong. Perhaps there were some bad things or some wrong things, but it's a different time. And if we don't move forward with the lessons and the fabulous work that's been done before us, we get stuck there. And so, a shout out to our, our forebears, our forefathers, foremothers, and forepeople who have led so bravely and made decisions that were the right, perhaps the right decisions for the time. I hope that we take those lessons from the past and move forward with the lessons that work and make sense for the future, and bring us together, and recognize the inherent worth and dignity of everyone who's a Unitarian Universalist, whether they say they are or not. And that we open the doors and the pathways and the sidewalks, that the work that the board does opens those portals so that we can all go forward and feel good about the work that we're doing and feel like we are making a difference somewhere in our own little corners of the world, wherever that is.
Well, as the youth representative on the board, I'm really hoping to continue to hear the moderators and the entire board and all the governance officers continue to speak about youth and young adults. Because the thing is, is that, right, exactly. Before we had these level, or these types of leadership, I was barely hearing about the youth in, by actual high officers, such as the moderators. And now, we're actually talking about, you're actually talking about us, and you are one of us as well. And that's incredibly important, because the thing is, is that we do need to have great programming. We need to have great resources. We need to have... to have great programming, we need to have great resources, we need to have great youth, who we do have, in order to continue to participate in this leadership and in order to continue the legacy and have more people come forward to be the amazing leaders of this faith. And so I just really hope that the youth and young adults continue to be centered because we have voices and we are very loud, so you should be able to hear our voices unless you're yelling over us.
That's awesome. So, you know, we all know, we're, we're living in such a time of anxiety and uncertainty and sadness, you know? There's so much hurting and pain in the world around us and in the middle of all of that, we collectively and you all in your churches and congregations are, we're trying to evolve, you know? We're trying to live into doing all of this better, being in community in ways that are transformed and, and feel even better, more loving, more inclusive. And therein lies the power of who and what we are and can continue to be in even deeper ways is, you know, not getting caught in the, in the governance for the sake of governance, but understanding that we bring different sets of values and that we can be in loving, open-hearted dialogue around those different sets of values. We can find a way forward that honors those different values, once we see them, once we understand what's really motivating us and speaking to us and that we can continue moving forward and doing all the things we have wanted to do always, which is be as inclusive as possible and have even more folks from, from communities that have been underrepresented in our faith. We are, we are beginning to do that in ways that are powerful and different and real. I hope that we can begin filtering that out to our communities all across North America and I'm, I'm excited about that and grateful to be a part of that.
Thank you. And thank you to all of the analysts. We've got to wrap up. Yep, please. And thank you to the full board. We are just a representation of the full team, so thank you all as well. We've got to wrap up, much as I think we could talk about this forever, even though I'm sure you don't want to. I mean, not.
Just look for us in one of the red hats.
There you go. I was gonna say, we do want to talk about this, just perhaps not among ourselves, but with you out there and online. So, we're sorry that we didn't have time for questions here on the floor, through the tablets, but anybody who has questions or just generally wants to be in conversation with us, please come attend some of our open board office hours. They're next, happening in the convention center, room 2210, on Friday from 11:00 to noon and Saturday from 2:30 to 3:30 PM. And as Tim said, if you're not available then and you see us wearing our fabulously red hats, thank you, Alandria.